Our prayer and pledge this evening will be from Councilmember Toby Gilli. Mr. Gilli?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you bow with me, please? Dear God, our most loving heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day that you've given us in this great city in which we live. Dear Father, we come together tonight to make decisions for our community. We ask you to provide us with a measure of your wisdom as we do so. Father, we ask you to guide and protect the men and women of our armed services, both abroad and at home, who keep us safe. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We believe you stood by the flag of the United States of America and stood before the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, February 17, 2011. I have before you tonight to consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to amend the planned residential development PRD district located along Dale Lane.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area, the Manson Pike Center, to commercial fringe CF District and to rezone an area located on the corner of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road to commercial fringe CF District.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located west of Fortress Boulevard and south of Manson Pike to residential multifamily sixteen, R M sixteen District and Highway Commercial, C H District.
Move for passage.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to consider a proposed amendment to rezone an area along Gresham Lane and Fortress Boulevard to Highway Commercial, C H District.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance amending Murfreesboro City Code Chapter twenty-five and a quarter signs, Sections twenty-five and a quarter dash twenty-four dash twenty-five dash twenty-six to correct a reference.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll hear from Job Hastings and Associates regarding the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2010. Welcome, Mr. Job.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us come to present this. I hear your agenda is kind of light and I'll resist the temptation to go through page by page on our 185-page report here, but we'll hit some of the highlights.
All of its money's already spent. Is that what you're saying?
Oh, well, you'll notice there's a new picture here.
I think I see you right in the middle of the pool there.
Yeah. We're affectionately calling this the swimsuit issue, so...
You think it'll get some more readership, do you?
Yeah, maybe so. Maybe so. It is published on the website, so anybody who's interested can go out there and look at that. But I would like to thank Melissa Wright and her great department there. They've been as cooperative as usual and do a great job. And all the other city employees that we had interaction with were just as cooperative and we appreciate that. That helps our job tremendously. Let me just, like I say, just hit some of the highlights. If you go under the tab called Independent Account Auditors' Report, that is our opinion letter for this year. As usual, that expresses an unqualified opinion or a clean opinion on the financials statements of the city. It basically says that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated. And also, in accordance with state requirements, that's not only an opinion on the government taken as a whole, but it also expresses an opinion on each and individual fund of the city. So that, as I said, is a clean opinion. Over on page three, just past the next tab, is a report called Management's Discussion and Analysis. And this gives an overall view. This is management's report. And it gives an overall discussion of the financial aspects of the city for the past year ended June 30th of 2010. Some of the highlights there on page three. The general fund, at the end of the year, had an unreserved fund balance of $39,408,000. And that equates to about 74% of the annual general fund budget. So that gives an indication of how well the city's prepared in the case of a real downturn, sort of like we've experienced. And it says a lot about the financial stability of the city. In other words, if everything fell apart and there were no revenues whatsoever, the city has enough in reserve to get through three-quarters of the next budget year. So that says a lot about the city's financial condition. Also, the debt for the year decreased by over $10 million from the previous year. And that's one of the highlights there. I will say that for the 12th consecutive year, this report was submitted, or the previous year's report was submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association in Chicago for their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. There, it's scrutinized by a committee and they determine whether it meets the criteria that they established for meeting that award. And for the 12 straight years, it was awarded that certificate. So that's something to be proud of. If you turn just over past the tab that says Government-Wide Financial Statements, on page 23, that is a presentation of the city's balance sheet as of June 30th, 2010. And this statement gives a perspective on a long-term perspective. In other words, it includes all the assets of the city, including fixed assets, infrastructure such as roads, and that type of assets, and includes the long-term debts of the city, too. So it's more of a long-term perspective. And the entire city, the total assets were $1,330,000,000 at the end of the year there. And the total net assets or net equity of the city was $886,000,000 at the end of June of 2010. On the next page, the Government-Wide Statement of Activities, and this gives the expenditures of each function of the government. And then shows the revenues that are related to those. For instance, police for the year had total expenses of $21 million, just over $21 million. And then you'll see the charges for services that equate to that expense. Education, where you would expect a lot of grants, it had total expenditures for the year, $55,900,000. And you'll see there were grants that supported that of over $50 million, too. So that tells each segment of the government and a little bit about the expenditures and Over on, just past the tab that says Fund Financial Statements, this is a presentation based more on a budgetary basis, so it just includes the current type assets, more liquid assets, and current liabilities. This gives an idea of how the balance sheet, gives an indication of how the city is prepared for the coming budget year. So in this case, we had, you'll see the general fund had a total fund balance of $39,895,000 at the end of June. Flip over a few pages there to page 31, and you'll see the comparison for the general fund of the budget to the actual expenditures for the year. And just a couple of things to point out there. For the year, you would expect, as you might expect with a downturn in the economy, total revenues were below what expectations were for the budget year by some $950,000. However, if you turn over just a few pages to page 37, you'll notice that expenditures were held below budget by $1.3 million. So although revenues were below expectations, you were successful in holding expenditures down and holding those below budget as well. I won't go through in detail. There are notes to the financial statements that give a lot of detail on the debt of the city and various accounting pension plan, various accounting principles used by the And back in the back, there's a statistical section that has lots of 10-year trend data as far as revenues and expenditures. You can get an indication of how the city has grown over that 10-year period. There is a schedule on page 148 that shows the fund balances for the last 10 years. And one thing to point out there, I think the general fund in 2001 had a fund balance of just over $22 million. For this past year, it ended, as I indicated, with a fund balance of $39,895,000. So that's the increase that you've seen over the past 10 years. There's information on the debt here again, and several schedules on property taxes. On page 153, there are the 10 top taxpayers presented and compared to 10 years ago. And it's interesting to see how those have changed. Behind the tab that says Single Audit Section, there is a schedule that lists all the federal money that the city receives. And it's by granting agency. So you'll see those, Department of Housing and Urban Development, Agriculture, Transportation, of course, Education. Department of Education provides a lot of grant funds and everything. And this does include all departments of the city, including the city schools, et cetera. And on page 178, there's a summary of the auditor's results. This gives just an overall view of our audit and in a summary basis just tells you a lot of what I've just gone through. In an audit of an organization of this size, you would expect to have some findings, recommendations. We do have some of those that are presented in the back. And we feel like we've addressed those with management and they're all being looked into. And Mayor, I think that's your summary. Be glad to entertain any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Job. Any questions from the council or comments? This is through the year-end June 30th of 2010. So obviously, these are kind of going back and adding credibility to the expenditures of that fiscal year. Obviously, major road projects, a lot of public safety, transportation, and other things were handled during that year. We kicked off the Chamber of Commerce's new visitor center. Middle Tennessee Medical Center completed their operations. A lot of commercial and retail activity on the square. The university continues to grow and we'll be working on another road project there. We changed the city's defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan. We've had quite a year. And so there may be some other questions or comments from the council regarding this audit or maybe some trend line that Mr. Job did not touch on that you may have an interest in exploring.
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I will make a comment. I know that this budget year that we're looking at, last year, was relatively difficult and a lot of things we looked at was unexpected and didn't know what to expect. But I think what was good about it was the staff's ability to, and the council's ability to react. And I know sales tax revenue in this budget was down over like $1.2 million, some other issues. And our ability to react to those downturns and be able to cut our expenditures even more than that, which is what I think this shows. And I think that was the key to trying to do the right thing. I guess I want to say thank you, Mr. Lyons, for that. I know as staff, everybody did a good job on that.
The department heads clearly got the message when the economy took the downturn. We did tighten our belt. We slammed on the brakes and those were good decisions because that did bring our expenditure budget below what was budgeted. And we say this every year, just because you approve it in the budget, it doesn't mean it gets spent. We want to make sure we're taking care of the needs of our community, but we just don't go and spend it wildly. So we did bring in our expenditure budget under.
I think we do exactly what we respect to people in our community does, the same thing. When revenues fall short, they cut back on expenditures. As Mr. Job said, we have seven months of money in case something was to happen. I think that's a good safety net. It's good fiscal planning. And we'll say appreciate that, staff.
Other questions? Comments?
Well, my only comments are, you know, I always look at pages 3, 9, 10, and 151. They vary from time to time. It talks about when I came on the council, the tax rate was $1.90. It's now $1.40. So those pages, the other pages, show you the revenue that you take in compared to the expenses that you incur. Most businesses, Rob, would be out of business, you know, if you went by that sheet. I want the public to understand this is a governmental business and it operates a little different. Because we are obligated to provide services regardless of what happens. And we seem to have been doing a pretty good job. Oh, you all have, not me. Not me. Everybody else but me.
Ms. Wright, Ms. Tucker also deserve a pat on the back. You know, the accounting controls that they have in place help keep the city in excellent financial shape and their staff, with their leadership, do an outstanding job.
I think we have an excellent, excellent report before us, so I'm learning. And I know we have a tough job ahead when, right now, we're getting ready to look at the budget again, so... And like Mr. Washington said, we are being provided with some excellent services here in our city. And we have cut some things and we have to look hard at finding monies for rewarding the services and the people who are providing the service. So we have a tough job ahead, but the Lord has blessed our city. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Mr. McFarland?
Mr. Lyons and Mr. Job, we talk about this every year, but when we look at the audit and we talk about fund balance and that our fund balance is $37 million and some... But that doesn't mean that that's cash that's on hand. That's, you know, we have, some of that's restricted, some is unrestricted. So that's the one point that we look at every year to make that, that when employees or anyone here that we have a fund balance of $37 million, that doesn't mean that we have $37 million in cash that's just sitting around.
Right.
Is it $39? Yeah.
Would that be classified as receivables?
It's made up of many different things, but it's some cash, some receivables, some... Of course, there's liabilities that come out of that that need to be paid, so yes. And I think as mentioned, it is prudent to maintain a balance that, especially from what we've seen in the economy, to maintain a balance to maintain the financial security.
I think Mr. McFarland right on for bringing that up. There seems to be some kind of misconception that that money laying around that can be used for things, and we know that's not. That's all I have on the table.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gianna, Ms. McFarland, Ms. Washington, Ms. Gales, Mr. Gilli, if you have any comments?
Thank you. Everything's been said on the reporting, the way things are going for sure.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Do we need a motion to approve this audit?
Acceptance.
Acceptance. A motion that we accept.
I move that we accept the audit.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Job. Thank your staff. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Parkinson Recreation Director with regards to approval of change order number five for Sportscom Outdoor Pool.
I'm getting deja vu here.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, as you recall, at the last City Council meeting, change order number five for the Sportscom Outdoor Pool renovation, that includes both the indoor and the outdoor pool, was presented to you for consideration. It was recommended by the firm Johnson &amp; Bailey Architects, who was our architect on this project, that same construction company be issued 28 additional days on their contract, thus changing the substantial completion date from May 26th to June 23rd, 2010. Since the city did not accept the pool as substantially complete until June 30th, which is seven days later, they recommended liquidated damages in the amount of $14,000, which is in compliance with the contract at $2,000 a day. At that meeting, after much discussion, this item was deferred by council and it was recommended that the City Council, by the City Council, that the city attorney and the architect review this request for more detail and present their findings. Ms. McGannon's letter is attached for your review and so is Mr. Lynch's attached for your review. One of the things I wanted to note, in Mr. Lynch's letter, the city had an option to accept the pool earlier than June 30th. It was around two weeks earlier. And that was without the place structure. We felt like we wanted the complete pool. If we were that close, we wanted to go ahead and accept the complete pool. We tasked the contractor to deliver a complete project. We felt like that was the right decision. If you look at the success of the pool that we had in the month of June and the month of August, or excuse me, in the month of July and the month of August, we increased our participation 79% and our revenues right at 128, almost 129%. Matter of fact, in the month of July, we made as much in revenues as we did the entire season of 2009. So we know the pool was a success. It was a great project. It was the right thing that the City Council did in doing renovations of the pool. But we're here to present the recommendations of the architect. Mr. Lynch is here. He'll be glad to answer any questions. I'm sure Ms. McGannon would answer any questions on her opinion as well.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Mr. Goodman, what is the revenue, daily revenue for the pool?
It runs around $2,000, somewhere around $2,000 a day.
Is that where we came up with the penalty? I mean, is that, have any...
It was tied something related to that.
So we lost $2,000 a day?
Well, of course, that was the revenues coming in and that wasn't... That's what we looked at, basically.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Excuse me. Attorney McGannon, I would like to thank you and your staff and everyone involved that you got back to us so promptly and providing the information that you provided in the letter, which is excellent, and breaking it down where I can understand it. And I want to make my decision tonight based on strictly the facts in the contract between the City of Murfreesboro and the contractor. So therefore, I have a couple of questions for you. It's my understanding that the contract reads that all the change orders must be brought before the City Council for approval. Is that correct?
The contract reads that all the change orders have to be agreed to by the city. Long ago, the city established the precedent that regardless of the dollar amount of the change orders, that all the change orders would come back to the council. The contract doesn't require that, but the council has required that. And the city managers make that a practice.
Okay. In this particular case, were all the change orders brought before the City Council? And I think it was about five, right, so far?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We, as a council, we approved all of the city, all of the change orders, correct?
I did not re-verify that. I'm...
Yes. Mr. Goodman's provided a summary of the change orders that was distributed to them.
Right. In the material. Okay. So by the council approving these change orders, we were, in essence, I guess, given extension, additional time for the completion date, so to speak, based on the date that we said we wanted the pool open and other circumstances came up, so we had to have change orders, correct? That came before us and we actually approved them. Is that right?
The prior change orders didn't deal with the same period of time as this change order. Change orders by standard contract definition can be increases or decreases in the contract price or changes in the work that is going to be covered. In other words, no change in price, but a change in the work or a change in time. And so each of the change orders has dealt with a different topic. The first change order modified the contract... The first change order modified the contract. The second change order would modify the contract as modified by the first. So it's a cumulative effect in terms of the contract amount and the contract time.
Okay. So therefore, my understanding, based on the contract and the things that has transpired, there were seven days that the contractor could not account for, and it was said that for every day that they were late, it would be a $2,000 charge. So therefore, all the contractor owes us, based on your information you provided, is $14,000.
Yes. The recommendation from the architect is that the city accept the contractor's request for an extension of time. Even with that extension of time, the contractor still did not finish.
Right.
And therefore, the pre-established amount of $2,000 a day beyond substantial completion, which equals the seven days is where we get the $14,000. So the recommendation is that the time be adjusted, but even with the time adjustment, there would still be a liquidated damages penalty of $14,000.
Right. Okay. In my opinion, guys, I just see it as a no-brainer. I mean, $14,000 at all, in my opinion, and how I understand it, they owe.
Mr. McFarland.
I think this question is for Mr. Lynch, or Monsieur. When you read through the, there's a letter in the back from Same Construction that says the, it's on page two, the very last, the last sheet that we have in our information. It says, "The critical path timeline required to complete the project was disrupted by the delayed calls when Whitewater Manufacturing Company, the pre-approved and specified supplier of the zero entry structure, did not deliver the item when needed." So Councilman Hunsicker, who designed the plans for us in conjunction with Mr. Lynch and their architects, they specified the structure that was going to, that needed to be ordered.
That's exactly right, Mr. McFarland.
I think that's the thing that I look at. We told them through our documents what they had to order. They didn't pick who they were going to order it from. We told them who they were going to order it from.
Well, and I think in the document also, there was an opportunity for alternates, but none were submitted. Nobody else submitted. I mean, it's a very selective type of piece of equipment, so very few folks in the country make those.
The comments that I made last week, I don't want, and I think Ms. McGannon did a very good job by stating that we're not making a legal precedent by approving a change order like this, because I do think it's our responsibility with taxpayer dollars to hold people who have contracts with the city, hold their feet to the fire. And I think our staff, they have shown that we do that. But when we specify with our designs a certain material that has to be used, and the party that's working for the city, that's what they have to use, and they can't get that material, and that is mission-critical to the project that we're doing, it's hard to hold somebody and penalize them for not being able to follow through with what we tell them they have to do with the material that we're telling them that they have to do. My higher concern would be that if we do that, that it's going to be tough to monitor contracts, and when people are going to be very apprehensive to take into a contract when we're handcuffing them from the very beginning. So the penalty almost could look like that it would be retribution. So I'm reading that last paragraph. I think that sort of pretty much sums everything up.
Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. McGannon, every one of the change orders that are approved on this did not actually call for an extension time. The majority of them dealt with cost changes, material changes, that sort of thing. So as we approved change orders, we weren't, in essence, every time we approved a change order, approving an extension, nor was there being requested an extension of time. Is that a fair characterization?
That's correct, yes.
I've gone over this in my mind the last several days, back and forth. On the one hand, I think about that we, as the city, knew what a tight timeline we were putting on to get this project done. But at the same time, also, the fact that the contractor, when they accepted the contract, and this, I think, a fairly sophisticated contractor that we're dealing with, realized the timeline that they were on, and also were well aware of what the penalties were. But having said that, I tend to agree, Ms. Scales-Harris and Mr. McFarland, both, that when it's something that's beyond their control, and something that we realized was going to be so hard to get, I think, as a matter of fairness, that the seven days is probably the most appropriate thing to do.
Any other questions or comments?
My limited knowledge of contracts is sometimes an alternate should be available to be expected, and apparently, we didn't have one, and that's no one's fault. But on a tight timeline, that might be considered in the future.
Right. Mr. Young, what generally happens is there is a preferred product that is put into the specification, and then they will accept alternates if it meets that specification. And there were no other alternates submitted. They had no one else to bid. Because what happens, the contractor goes out and solicits bids from a group of folks, maybe three different manufacturers or four, that may have equal products, and none were submitted. That was the only person that submitted what met specification, which was specified. And then the contractor, and you read that in the letter, was required to pay about half of that money upfront before they would even start the manufacturing process. So they came to us and asked us if we would pay that upfront for them, and we told them we would not. According to the contract, we have to have something that is either installed or on-site before we can pay. So that liability was bore by the contractor.
I want to make, you know, I hear what Ms. Scales is saying about the change orders, but I agree with what Mr. Gilli said. The change orders itself did not extend the time limit. Is that what you're saying, Ms. McGannon?
Yeah, this is the only one that we're focusing on the time.
And, you know, I understand about the equipment too as well, but I just disagree with, you know, this is not a new contractor. He's, what was the total price of this project?
Three and a quarter million.
Three and a quarter million dollars, and we're down to within on $50,000 bucks. And I think he knew that going in, and if he didn't, he should have. And I think we had a contract, and my vote would be to make him abide by the contract that he agreed to.
Is that in form of a motion?
Nope.
Okay.
I've already tried that, Mayor. That dog didn't hunt, as they say.
I understand. Then is there a motion from other members of the council?
Mayor, let me make one, a couple of comments, and then I will make a motion. Ms. Bratcher, I agree with you in principle on that. And actually, the mediator me says that the seven days, they definitely owe. The other 28 days over the piece of equipment, that should be borne equally between us and them, because they took on the contract. We knew that was the case. But again, what we're talking about is something out of the contractor's control, which the contract does make allowance for. Is that correct, Ms. McGannon?
Yes, it's one of the things clearly specified as a basis for an extension.
And in this situation, we're talking about money that we are being paid as opposed to arguing over how much more we're going to be paying them. This is money we're taking back in. With that, I move that we accept the recommendations been made of accepting the seven days of liquidated damages.
All right, you have a motion. Is there a second?
The motion is really to approve change order five, right?
Correct.
All right, we have a motion and a second, then. Mr. Gilli made the motion, and Ms. Scales-Harris seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? If not, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. All right, this time, thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Any beer permit applications?
Not any tonight, Mayor.
You have before you a list of the bills proposed to be paid by the city. Any questions regarding the bills, the statements to be considered for payment?
Mayor, Mr. Jobe says we've got the money to pay them, so I guess I move we pay the bills.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I would recommend to you that we appoint Kurt Way to the Historic Zoning Commission at this time. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll.
Pardon me?
I'll say, so moved.
All right, thank you.
I think Mr. Way will enjoy that.
I know he will. Is there a second? Okay.
Quickly before we get to wash.
I'm missing something.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I second, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Young. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
He's going to kill me.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Also, at this time, I would like to clarify some appointments I made to, or reappointments I made to the Golf Commission, and I ask you to accept these. Chris Masaro and Larry Wilkerson had previously been reappointed to terms ending on January 31st of 2013. The appointment I made, reappointing Bill Allen, should be for a term ending on January 31st, 2013. And the reappointment of John Blankenship, Alan Richardson, and Don Turner should be to terms ending on January 31st, 2014, to make that recommendation to you.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Motion second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Other business from the council or staff to come before the council? Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, and good evening, members of the council. I have this evening for you, I think it's handed out on your desk, a change order number seven. This is the final for the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. This is a small change order in the amount of $4,610, which basically completes this project and will allow us to finish up and conclude the administrative part of starting to close this project out. We do have a March 31st deadline with our funding contract with T-DOT, and we would recommend that you approve this so we can move forward.
Any questions regarding this change order number seven, the final change order on the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center? If not, is there a motion?
Will be approved.
Second. All right, thank you. Any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any other business to come before the council? If not, you're adjourned.